Good afternoon to everyone. I show 5:30. Everybody else? What'd you say, Ms. Mary Child? And a half? Okay, why don't we go ahead? The Pine Bluff City Council meeting for September the 8th, 2015 is hereby called to order. May we have roll call, please?
Alderman Brummett?
Here.
Alderman Stepp? Alderman Walker? Alderman Boyd? Alderman Brown Senior? Alderman Mays?
Here.
Alderman Holcomb? Alderman Boyd Junior?
Brown Junior here.
Excuse me, why y'all start the meeting and you ain't got a quorum setting at the table? I don't understand that. You don't start a meeting till your quorum is at the table. I don't care if it's outdoors, you don't start the meeting till the quorum is in. Cause you don't know where you're gonna have a meeting tonight. You gotta have a quorum to start a meeting. So y'all start the meeting without a quorum. It don't matter. You don't need to start it until the quorum gets in the building.
We have established a quorum.
Now we probably just getting started.
Each of you have a copy of the minutes from August the 17th, 2015. It's been properly moved and seconded that the minutes as presented be approved. Floor is now open for discussion. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Additionally, you have in your packet minutes from the special called meeting from August the 24th, 2015. Do we have a motion?
Second.
Okay. It's been properly moved and seconded that the minutes from August the 14th, special called meeting, the first one on August the 24th be approved. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any no's? Approved. And then we have one more. Oh, it's attached to that one. Okay. Then we have in your packet, the second special called meeting, minutes from August the 24th, 2015. Do we have a motion to approve? Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded that the minutes from the second special called meeting on August the 24th be approved. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Like sign. Motion carries. Okay, moving on to committee reports, Ways and Means. Alderman Brummett?
Yes, Mayor, we have four budget adjustments that were in your packets. The first one is involving the transit fund, transit grant funds carryover, which we had on the agenda last time and decided to review it again this time. The total amount, the adjustment requested is eighty-five thousand nine ninety-one. And you see the copy there with the various accounts that the money will be moved from to meet the requirements. I move we accept this budget adjustment.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that the budget adjustment for transit in the amount of eighty-five thousand nine hundred ninety-one dollars be approved. Floor is now open for discussion. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, may we have roll call, please?
Alderman Brummett?
Aye.
Alderman Walker?
No.
Alderman Brown Senior?
No.
Alderman Mays? Alderman Mays? Alderman Brown Junior?
Aye.
Three to two. It doesn't pass. Okay? Doesn't pass.
I guess, is the second one the CDBG ones? That carryover grant funds from 2014 to 2015? You see the attachment with all of the various expenditures and so on. I move we accept this budget adjustment from the CDBG grant funds.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that the carryover for community development, carryover grant funds from 2014 to 2015 be approved. Floor is now open for discussion. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, we have a request from the Fire Department. There's various areas in the department that are not significant amounts of money that are over budget. And the department has elected to utilize money in unused overtime to be able to balance those accounts. This is to fund overtime machinery maintenance through the end of this year. I move we accept this budget adjustment from the Fire Department.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that a budget adjustment for the Fire Department for overtime be approved. Floor is now open for discussion. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, we have a request from the Street Department concerning a 2011 Caterpillar grater. As I understand, this was actually repaired in 2014, if I read it correctly. And that they got the bill in '15, so they're having to do a budget adjustment to cover the, to be able to pay the bill. The total amount, sixteen thousand dollars, is a request to be able to meet the requirements to fix the Caterpillar grater in the Street Department. And I move we accept this budget adjustment.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that a budget adjustment for the Street Department in the amount of sixteen thousand dollars be approved. Floor is now open for discussion.
Alderman Brummett said that this was in '14, and which the invoice says twelve, thirteen, fourteen, which that part is true. But with this Caterpillar, everything has been replaced in, with this Caterpillar to valves, screws, all plates and all types of things. To me, they built, they had bolts, disc screens, filters, rings, washers and everything else to the tune of sixteen thousand dollars. It would've been better for us to buy one. And I don't know why it's just coming up now since it was in 2011. So, I really can't support it.
It's a 2011 Caterpillar?
I know it.
Okay, but it was done, the work was done in 2014?
I understand that.
Mayor, can we get an estimation from Mr. Rowden, please?
I'm gonna ask if Mr. Johnny would come up, please? Uh-huh, thank you.
Why don't you let Johnny explain to you exactly what happened? When I looked at the paperwork, it looked to me like that it was actually requested in '14 and they got the bill in '15.
That's what I was looking at. Go ahead, Johnny. What is a grater?
This was a transmission overhaul. Bill actually got invoiced in '14, but we paid it in '15.
Can you talk through the mic?
I'm sorry.
Did you say paid? You already have paid it?
We paid it in 2015, but the actual invoice for the parts and labor was in '14 and they billed us and it came in 2015.
Okay, well, what is the budget adjustment for? You're saying they have already been paid, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
We're compensating that because it actually should've been paid in '14 because the invoice was due in '14.
Okay.
But we didn't get the parts and everything to 2015. They sent us the invoice in 2015.
Okay, so when did you actually pay it? You have April the 2nd, '15, is that when it was paid?
Yes. April 2nd, 2015.
Okay. So what is the need for this budget adjustment at this time?
See, that money should've came out of the 2014 budget where it's now coming out of the 2015. Actually, it should've came out of the 2014.
But you paid it in '14?
We paid it in '15.
You paid it in '15?
Yes, Mayor.
But I'm saying, if you've already paid it and you're coming for a budget adjustment, where is the money coming from? What line item is the money coming from?
Well, in actuality, we paid it in 2015. We should've actually paid it in '14. That way, we would've had to compensate this 2015 for the money.
I see, but I'm still saying you paid it from what?
We paid it in 2015.
I mean, from what, what line item that was paid from?
We paid it from our heavy maintenance equipment account.
Okay. So if you paid it from your heavy maintenance equipment account, why would, why would we be voting for, is this reimbursement or what?
Yes, reimbursement because in our 2015, it should've been paid in '14 where we're having to take the money out of our 2015 budget to pay for it. Where the money should've came out of '14.
Okay. If you had the money in '14, why was it not carried over? It wasn't carried over, wouldn't it?
We budgeted for 2015. We didn't budget that in because it was budgeted for 2014 out of the heavy maintenance account.
Okay, that's what I'm saying. It was budgeted for '14, but you didn't pay it until '15?
We didn't do it until '15.
Okay. So if it was budgeted in '14, what happened with the money in the '14 budget?
We budgeted for 2015. I'm really not understanding.
Okay, I understand, I understand that you don't. But this is, if you, if you had the money in '14 budget and they knew that it was, that it was going to be owed, that that money should have been put aside or paid. If it wasn't paid in '14, it should've been put aside. So I'm saying, what happened to the money that was in '14 budget that you didn't pay it?
Why don't we ask Mr. Miller? Because he knows about the carryover funds. Steve, can you answer that?
The 2014 carryover included all the, you know, revenue in excess of expense and that item could've been decided and separated out in the carryover to increase the budget in '15 for repair and maintenance, but all the carryover was assigned to overlay. So basically, the entire carryover from 2014 into 2015 went into the overlay budget.
Okay, well, actually, this question should have been answered by Rick since he running the department. Okay, I'll have another question.
Any other questions for Mr. Johnny?
Rick, the grater, that's, explain what the grater is. And is it, is it running now? Is it down?
Yeah, it's running now. It's, it had to have a transmission rebuild in it. The machine cost over two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. And so sixteen thousand dollars isn't a lot of money to spend on a machine of that magnitude.
So that's what you was picking, streets?
It's used in the wintertime to scrape the ice and all off the road. It's used when we cut the shoulders on the roads to do overlay. It's used pretty regular.
Okay, any other questions? Yes, sir.
Again, as Alderman Walker asked, why wasn't it paid in '14?
We got the bill in December of 2014. I talked with Steve about it and it was supposed to be paid out of that year's budget because there was enough money in our '14 budget. But because it wasn't billed until '15, that's when it was paid.
So you retained a balance? You retained a balance from '14?
We already had that much in it, but it was carried over to '15.
Now we're at the end of '15? We're nearing the end of '15 and you just paying for it?
No, we paid for it back in, I think April was when it was paid for.
And I think Alderman Walker was asking the question, where did the money come from? You took it out of your budget, out of the street budget?
Yeah, we're gonna do a budget adjustment. It's gonna come from, yeah, what are we gonna take it out of? It's gonna come out of salaries over into that. It's just gonna be a transfer of money.
Sounds very risky for salaries.
You know, my position is that if you knew that you had this sixteen thousand dollars that was owed in '14, apparently, you got the bill in December. So that should have been in December of, it was said twelve, thirty, fourteen. But you got the bill in April, but you just paid it in July.
July? Is it paid in April?
Okay, here it said need budget adjustment in the amount seven twenty-eight fifteen.
What it is, we're fixing to run low of money in our heavy equipment maintenance due to the fact that we've had several breakdowns like on our milling machine and all. And so we're gonna run out of money before the end of the year. So we're requesting this adjustment to keep us from running out of money and being back here later trying to explain again why we need the money.
You paid it in April?
No, you paid it in July.
No, we paid it in April.
Then why are you just asking us for a budget adjustment?
Because we're starting to run low of money in our heavy equipment.
So if you hadn't run low, we wouldn't have to worry about it?
Right.
But you were aware that you had this outstanding bill, right?
Correct. And I also asked that it be paid out of the '14 budget and it was not paid out of the '14 budget. So therefore, the money was transferred over, the carryover, into this year where that the budget, we allotted a certain amount for each category under the headings of what it goes to.
Mr. Rowden, I'm a budget man. I just don't like it when we lay over budget, lay over money and ask for it too late. That's how we get behind and that's how we get caught up in traps. We wonder where the money was and why we end up can't pay payroll. I'm hoping the city never reached that point, but that's how we become to the point where we can't make payrolls. That's what happened to some of our closer friends.
Any other comments?
So actually, the money is in your budget? You're just moving it around?
The money's actually in the budget. We're just asking to transfer it over to that account so that we won't run low in that account.
So it is in your budget? You're just moving it over to pay that bill?
Right.
Any other questions? Thank you. May we have roll call, please?
Alderman Brummett?
Aye.
Alderman Walker?
No.
Alderman Brown Senior?
No.
Alderman Mays?
Aye.
Alderman Brown Junior?
Aye.
Fails.
That concludes the budget adjustments. I just want to remind everybody that on Thursday, the 10th, at 1:00 PM, we will have a budget preview for the coming year to evaluate revenues, projected expenses. Because, you know, we've done a lot of things during the year that have actually created new expenditures that we might find a way to fund. And also, revenues are being projected to be pretty much flat, if not down just a little bit for next year. So we're gonna, 1:00, the 10th, in the mayor's conference room. And Mr. Miller will have information to provide to us so that we can all get on the same page and see where we need to go for 2016. Okay? At this time, I'd like to call forward Mr. John Wilkerson to discuss a settlement option that's being presented to the council.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening, hello.
I am not Mike Mosley, as I think many of y'all were expecting before I got here. It seems I got the pillar in the way. I don't see that well. I was down here for another case. I represent y'all in another lawsuit. I think I've talked to some of you in previous litigation. I am here on the Kenny Barkins versus Pine Bluff case, which Mike Mosley has been litigating. He's the partner of mine down at the municipal league. It's against Detective Stevenson, Jeremy Funderburgh, and Officer Hillard. The case, basically, Mike has talked to everybody involved and based on the documentation and on what, how he felt the case would end up going. He engaged in settlement talks with the other party and they came to an agreement to settle the case for eight thousand dollars. Eight hundred dollars of that would come from y'all since the municipal league would pay ninety percent of the settlement. And so I'm here on behalf of Mike to ask to accept the settlement offer of essentially eight hundred dollars to the city of Pine Bluff.
Motion, okay. We need to make, someone make a motion.
I make a motion that we pay the eight hundred dollars to settle this case.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded that a settlement for the city in the amount of eight hundred dollars regarding the Barkins versus City of Pine Bluff, settlement be approved?
When did this take place?
Pardon me?
When did this take place?
Just recently.
The settlement's recently, yeah, the incident occurred back in...
When did the incident happen?
2012.
You know what month?
September, February? February 26th. I don't know that to be fact, but she seems trustworthy.
You've got a copy of it right here.
It's February 6th, 2012.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank y'all very much.
That concludes Ways and Means, Mayor.
Thank you. Orders and resolutions, Alderman Brummett?
Mayor, the orders and resolutions committee met prior to the meeting. The sponsors have requested that we pull Resolutions 3, 4, 5, Resolution Number 8, and Resolutions 12, 13, and 14. And we have one new one to add. We have a resolution recognizing the 8th Annual East Side Neighborhood Celebration. Ma'am?
We are not going to edit. That was held on Monday.
Okay. It was given to me and asked me to put it on. All right, we're not gonna put that one on tonight, so that will... That will conclude the orders and resolutions.
Okay, thank you, sir. Economic and Community Development, Alderman Brown Senior?
Mayor, we did have a meeting, thank you. We did have a meeting on last week. And it was almost to slip my memory that we did. We actually agreed to accept a, some back money from HUD, I believe. If Mr. Matthews would come forward, that would be very good.
Mayor? Yeah, and I'll make it brief because we covered a lot of things and several other items on the agenda. We did meet last Tuesday. And the purpose of the meeting was to accept and do a budget adjustment for the two-hundred-and-one-thousand, two-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars that we received back from the first payment that we made to HUD from the Treasury Department. We did get the monies back and we needed the council approval to accept the budget adjustment to add it into our budget for 2015. At the same time, our 2014 carryover had not happened for this year because we received our funds late last year. And we also received them late this year, but not as late as we did last year. So what we did, we went back and added all our carryovers in plus the money that was repaid, made the budget adjustment, and those numbers that you see now, now match up with what we have in IDIS, which is the federal funding system as well as the New World system, which has been a problem over the years. We managed to do it with the help of Steve and Lori. So the numbers that you're seeing are actually budgeting in what IDIS shows with the federal government and what we show. We also, there was a couple of other issues that we spoke of with the five hundred dollar deposit, which will come up later, as well as increasing the emergency grant funding from seven thousand five hundred, which we've probably had for 15 years, to ten thousand dollars. So basically, that was the gist of the meeting in a nutshell.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. And it was a very good meeting.
Oh, yeah, Mr. Matthews? I have a question. Because we had agreed upon a hundred thousand dollars for the improvement of the three parks. And if this budget is approved, will that hundred thousand dollars, we have a problem getting that hundred thousand dollars back out of your budget to go into a separate fund for the park?
We can't move it to another fund because the checks are wrote out of IDIS in New World. It'd have to stand in IDIS till we actually write checks out. We can't take it out of IDIS, out of the federal grant and place it in another. They won't allow us to do it. But we can designate whatever dollars amount for that project. But you know, at the same time, we have to finish out Townsend Park and we have to put that playground system in that April was telling us about. So I'm pretty sure it would be close, but if you let us run the numbers and get it back to you?
No, Earl. Now, if you're running playground equipment for Townsend Park, right?
Yes, we have to put it in in order to keep the state grant.
Does it have to be Townsend Park or is it Parks Period?
No, it has to be Townsend Park because it was a part of the state grant to put for the lights, as well as part of the project that went on at Splash Park. They were all tied into one. And that grant was about four hundred thousand dollars. And in that grant, it said that we would put a playground equipment in at Townsend Park. And the funds are not there. That's why we have to put that in out of this in order to keep our funds from the state. Else we'll be fined about a hundred thousand dollars, I believe.
Now, you were saying that, explain this again of how it came about that you were supposed to have certain amount of playground equipment in Townsend Park and that was supposed to come through what?
That came from the grant that Parks and Rec received to improve the ball fields, to improve, make the improvement at Splash Pad, as well as put playground equipment at Townsend Park.
But right now, we are not speaking of those funds. We are speaking of the funds that was returned back from HUD.
Yes.
And so that's where I'm talking about getting a hundred thousand dollars from.
The problem that Parks is having, that they don't have the money to put playground equipment in. We'll put it in and they'll get their last reimbursement, which you can probably reallocate it back out. They don't have the money to buy that park equipment.
Well, maybe what we need to do is get, because the three parks that we are talking about, they don't have any equipment.
Oh, I understand.
And so my suggestion is that we get the hundred thousand from the money that came back from HUD. And then when Parks get their money, you know, because you still have over a hundred thousand dollars left from that HUD refund, right?
Right.
And so it's split up then and all that that you don't get in, all that that is needed after that, that, you know, you can get that from other sources.
Our first commitment was to complete the ball field with the bleachers and fencing.
But the bleachers and fencing doesn't have anything to do with this money that came back from HUD?
Yes, ma'am.
But it wasn't designated for that. Because, well, we know that the money came back from HUD because of the money that we had to repay back.
Exactly.
So that's how it came back.
Well, if you recall, we went before the committee earlier this year. We requested an additional one-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand dollars to complete the ball field.
Right.
The committee only gave us $38,000, saying that we used the money that we get back from HUD to complete the ball fields.
But how much did you have prior to that?
Prior to that?
For the park?
You didn't have any.
Well, for the ball field, you did.
We had to use all the money that the council had approved for the ball fields.
Okay, and that was how much?
We probably spent right at a million dollars.
Or more?
Or more, I don't have the exact price.
I think more.
Yes. But at the same time, we found out that there are still some other things that are needed.
Well, you know, my position is this, there's always going to be some things needed. But it's not fair to put everything in Townsend Park. All the money that we keep bringing in is going to Townsend Park, when we have the park down here on Sixth Street, Hudson Park, that they don't have anything but two basketball goals, and they use that park every day. And Mississippi Park, they have two rusted-out swing sets. They don't have anything. And I'm not sure what J.C. Jeffries Park need, but it's, you're talking about splitting $100,000 between three parks, rather than putting, compared to putting millions into Townsend Park. You know, I understand that it's a baseball field and all that stuff, so they are getting more than the others.
Well, I'm not arguing the fact that they don't need it, but I've kind of been working with Parks and Rec, and I was working off their requests, as to how we kind of spend the money. And I think April was going to make an assessment and kind of get back. I agree, I know Mississippi Park hadn't had improvements since I've probably been here.
Right.
And I know the other parks did it too.
As you said, that's a long time, we know.
Right, yes, ma'am. But I would like to finish the ball field.
Uh-huh, well, I would too, but I'd like to give them some equipment too, because you're talking about minor for those parks, compared to major out there.
I understand. If you would afford us to get your report back, I think right now, we just have it sitting there, until she gives us an authorization of what she needs at any field.
I don't need reports, I need money.
I got the money.
Because the report, oh, good, good, that's what I'm trying to get.
That's the money.
That's what I'm trying to get. Because reports are not going to help any. You know, these people need the parks fixed.
Oh, I agree.
And if you sign it off, I'll never see it again.
I agree.
And I do understand that when we were in that meeting on last Tuesday, that it was quoted that the money had to get into the reserve, into the treasury first, and then later, we would do what we have to do in form of a resolution or some of that nature. Right now, we need to receive the money first, is that correct?
It is there.
Okay.
We have to do the adjustment, so that New World will reflect that the money is there.
But that's why, that I had a resolution for it to go into an account for those parks.
Mr. Matthews, I'm going to let Ms. Walker twist your arm and April with that, I'm not tinkling with that.
I understand, Ms. Walker had the conversation, I think we can meet that medium. But I'm just the financier on it, she might have to twist April's wrist on what needs to go where. I have the money for whichever direction we go.
Okay.
Well, let us all remember that we have 19 parks. So, we can't just focus everything on three parks. So, let's think about that as well.
Actually, we are speaking of four parks. And I'm, in the meantime, if the three parks had not been bought up, you would be talking about one park.
Well, actually, we'd probably be talking about more parks.
Which is Townsend Park. But that I asked for, the three parks, we, and I know that it's a process that we have to go through. Everything is not going to be done at one time.
Yes, ma'am.
But if Townsend Park is getting millions, then some of the other parks can get something.
Well, we're just trying to finish that park up.
And we are sorry, yeah, we are trying to finish the park up. But in the meantime, the people that use those parks want something as well.
Yes, ma'am, but we still need to finish up what we've already started.
That's, yeah, that's what I understand, because your focus is on Townsend Park.
Well, it's focused on completing the projects that have already been started, and we need to complete.
Uh-huh, well, yeah.
Any other questions from Mr. Matthews?
Yes, I have, I have a couple. I might want to speak my piece on it too. And I'm in the fourth world where Townsend Park is, and I'm very disappointed in it. For a million buck, if you get a chance, go out there and look at it. I've never seen a baseball field, three baseball fields with no press box. How do you call a game without a press box? I don't understand it. Tell me. They've been working on the park for almost two years, and it looks a mess out there. And you can't tell me a million dollars have been spent out there. Now, I'm agreeing with Alderman Walker. Go far as you can with that park, because it's not going to be satisfactory. See, you all don't see this stuff, and they just be, we just be rattling up here, and it doesn't make any sense. You can take a million dollars and go out there and build a whole neighborhood. If you go look at that park out there, that is pathetic. That is, that's a shame for this city to say you spent a million bucks out there. Now, the rest of those parks need some money, and I'm going to support that $100,000 to put in the rest of those parks, because the rest of our parks are a mess too. And we're spending a million dollars every year, and we call it parking recreation. And you can't, it's not family-friendly. And we need to stop this stuff fooling these people in the city with their tax dollars, by like the convention center. They get $1.2 million a year, and nothing going on over there. Downtown Development.
Can we stay on the subject, we need to stay on the subject of the parks?
You don't want people to know this, but Downtown Development get $50,000 a year from the City of Pine Bluff, and that's a private organization. It's not even for Pine Bluff.
Let's stay on the, let's stay on the subject, please.
Because they know I'm right. And y'all don't see this stuff going on up here.
Any more questions from Mr. Matthews?
When would Townsend Park be finished?
Thank you, sir, you can sit down. Thank you, sir.
Well, I'm asking them a question, Mayor. When would Townsend Park be finished? Because it's unacceptable for the city and the citizens out there.
Mr. Mayor, let me answer your question. See, every time I get up here, I have to listen you ram-bash about all these projects that are not done properly. Projects that I've been in charge of, projects that I have reported to everybody every week. Personally, I don't appreciate it. But I'm going to answer your question, soon as the council allocate this money, park will be done.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, let's, I forgot what we're doing.
I'm still doing committee report.
What are we doing?
I'm in committee report, it was my committee report.
Do we need a motion to accept that money?
I allowed it to go with this part.
We've already done that, the CBD, we've done that. We've accepted the money. Oh, this is your report, hello.
Yeah, it's my committee report, I allowed that to happen, I guess, I don't know.
You did, you're the responsible person.
I'm responsible for that. So that cut my time, I'm not going to talk tonight. That complete my report.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Public Health and Welfare, Alderman Brown, Jr. Are you really going to say anything?
No report.
Thank you, sir. Public Works, Alderman Ace.
I do want to come in, Mr. Ken Johnson, with Waste Water Utility. It's in the packet too, on the agenda, item number 11, and it's enough room for everybody to be a co-sponsor for receiving the Platinum Six Peak Performance Award. And that's a great accomplishment for Mr. Ken Johnson, but that's all I wanted to say about that. And once again, thank you, Mr. Johnson, and thank you, council, for listening as well.
Thank you, sir. Development and Planning, Alderman Boyd's not here. Traffic and Aviation, Administration. Public Safety, Alderman Walker.
We, Public Safety, had a meeting this afternoon. Alderman Brown and myself was present. And we got a report from each one of the fire chiefs, the fire, I mean, each one of the chiefs. The fire chief gave us a report on the fires and the services that they provide, and as well as the police department did the same.
Okay, are you going to, okay, thank you. Onto... Onto Ordinances and Resolutions.
Mayor, we have an ordinance repealing ordinance number 4467, and abolishing the Pine Bluff Civic Auditorium Complex Commission and for related purposes. Up for the first reading.
Whereas ordinance number 4467 adopted April 7, 1975, created the Pine Bluff Civic Auditorium Complex Commission, consisting of seven positions to manage, operate, and keep in good state of repair the Pine Bluff Municipal Auditorium and related facilities. And whereas the commission is moribund with only three members at this time, and the public interest would best be served by its abolish, abolition, and the facility directly administered by the city government. And whereas Arkansas Code Section 14, 141, 103 expressly grants the governing body of the municipality, which created such a commission, the authority to repeal the ordinance which created the body, which effectively abolishes the commission. Now therefore being ordained by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, Section 1, that ordinance number 4467 passed April 7, 1975, is hereby repealed, and the Pine Bluff Civic Auditorium Complex Commission created thereby is abolished. Section 2, that all ordinances or any parts thereof in conflict with this ordinance are repealed to the extent of the conflict. Section 3, the ordinance being of general or permanent nature, the clerk shall cause its publication as required by law. Section 4, the ordinance shall take effect on the 31st day after its passage.
Place it on the calendar. We have an ordinance amending Section 26-155 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, regarding downtown limited-time parking, penalty for exceeding time limit, to add subsection D concerning parking along Barracuda Street, near and in front of the Jefferson County Courthouse, and for related purposes, up for the first reading.
Whereas sufficient public parking exists in Jefferson County Courthouse area to allow removal of any time constraints for parking along Barracuda Street from Main Street to West Pine Street. Now therefore being ordained by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, Section 1, Section 26, 155 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, is amended to add the following as new subsection D. D, notwithstanding subsections A and C of this section, or any other provision of this chapter, there should be no time limit for vehicle parking along Barracuda Street from its intersection with Main westward towards this intersection with Pine Street, unless the vehicle is abandoned, junked, or inoperable motor vehicle, as defined in Section 1652 of this code, in which case the vehicle may be removed as provided by law. Section 2, all ordinances or parts thereof in conflict with this ordinance are repealed to the extent of the conflict. Section 3, this ordinance being of general or permanent nature, it should be published as prescribed by law.
We'll place it on the calendar. Moving on to number 6, a resolution authorizing the increase in the maximum amount of the grant in the Emergency Rehabilitation Program administered through the Economic and Community Development Department.
Whereas the current cap of $7,500 for an emergency grant for residential housing rehabilitation is no longer adequate due to the increased cost of construction and materials. And whereas the cap should be increased to $10,000. Now therefore being resolved by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, the Economic and Community Development Department is authorized and directed to increase the maximum amount of the grant available for emergency rehabilitation of residential housing from $7,500 to $10,000 effective immediately.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second, that a resolution authorizing the increase in the maximum amount of the grant in the Emergency Rehabilitation Program administered through the Economic and Community Development Department. Floor is now open for discussion.
Mayor, I had a discussion with Mr. Kirkendall.
Do what, I'm sorry, was that, was that a question?
Just a minute.
Oh, okay. Any other discussions or questions?
Did she ever, Walker, did she ever come in on number 6?
Number 6.
Yes, sir.
Actually, we discussed this in my committee over a month ago, and it's just coming to us, but so it's already been discussed and come out of the committee. Were you there?
Right, right, I was there.
Okay.
Yeah, I was there, I was there to meet. Since I was on the Community Development Committee, I just wanted to know if I could be a sponsor. That's why, I want to be a sponsor as well.
Okay, any other...
A co-sponsor, rather.
Any other comments, questions? Hearing done, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Move on to number 7. A resolution authorizing the requirement of a deposit with an application for residential rehabilitation through the Economic and Community Development Department.
Whereas a number of applicants for residential rehabilitation failed to carry through with the application, resulting in much preliminary work performed by the Economic and Community Development Department going for naught. And whereas the requirement that the applicant submit a $500 deposit with the application will reduce the number of unserious or non-compliant applicants. Now therefore being resolved by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, the Economic and Community Development Department is authorized and directed to require each application for residential housing rehabilitation, a $500 deposit to demonstrate the seriousness of the applicant to carry through with the application and to defray costs of preliminary work relating to the application.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second, that a resolution authorizing the requirement of a deposit with an application for residential rehabilitation through the Economic and Community Development Department. Floor is now open for discussion.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
This too had come through my committee, and it passed with our committee, but if they do pass, for the City Council. It is necessary that they do the deposit to defraud people from having the city to spend money there, and then they decided not to go through the program. This money is refundable into the service of that contract. I think I'm doing this right, Mr. Matthews.
Yes, sir.
Very good. Okay, thank you.
The word rental should be in front.
Okay, yeah, I see, okay.
So that you know, these are for the landlords, not our regular homeowners.
Yes, right. Thank you, Mr. Matthews.
Any other comments, yes, sir?
As a member of the community as well, Chairman Brown, I would like to be a co-sponsor on this as well.
You may.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Now we'll move to number 9. A resolution reappointing Diane Tatum to the Pine Bluff Jefferson County Port Authority.
Whereas the term of Diane Tatum as a member of the Pine Bluff Jefferson County Port Authority Board has expired, and whereas the council desires that Ms. Tatum be reappointed to another term on the board. Now therefore being resolved by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, that the reappointment of Diane Tatum to the Pine Bluff Jefferson County Port Authority to serve a term to expire May 31, 2018, is hereby approved and confirmed.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second, that a resolution reappointing Diane Tatum to the Pine Bluff Jefferson County Port Authority. Floor is now open for discussion. Hearing done, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, we have a resolution reappointing Joseph Geringer, Jr. to the Pine Bluff Jefferson County Port Authority.
Oh, on the last person, what's that? Was she here, was she actually here?
Ms. Diane Tatum.
Ms. Tatum? I guess we wanted to acknowledge her if she was here, okay.
Ms. Tatum was at one time the director over Entergy, and she retired from that.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure she was present, that we acknowledged her.
Okay, no.
Whereas the term of Joseph Geringer, Jr. as a member of Pine Bluff Jefferson County Port Authority Board has expired, and whereas the council desires that Mr. Geringer be reappointed to another term on the board. Now therefore being resolved by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, that the reappointment of Joseph Geringer, Jr. to the Pine Bluff Jefferson County Port Authority to serve a term to expire May 31, 2018, is hereby approved and confirmed.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second, that a resolution reappointing Joseph Geringer, Jr. to the Pine Bluff Jefferson County Port Authority. Floor is now open for discussion. Hearing done, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
We have a resolution congratulating the Pine Bluff Waste Water Utility and Manager Ken Johnson for receiving the Platinum Six Award from the National Association of Clean Water Agencies, and expressing the appreciation of the city for its outstanding performance.
Whereas the Pine Bluff Waste Water Utility is recognized by national and state agencies for excellence in its operation and management, and whereas the sixth consecutive year, the utility has been awarded the prestigious Platinum Six Award from the National Association of Clean Water Agencies, utility has been awarded the prestigious Platinum Six Award from the National Association of Clean Water Agency, which exemplifies its superior performance and commitment to environmental compliance resulting from the hard work and outstanding management of the utility. And whereas the City of Pine Bluff is fortunate to have such professional expertise running the utility and the city council desires to congratulate the utility for this award. Now therefore being resolved by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, that we, the mayor and the members of the city council hereby extend our congratulations to the personnel of the Pine Bluff Wastewater Utility and its manager, Ken Johnson, for receipt of the Platinum Six Award from the National Association of Clear Water Agencies and further express the appreciation of the city for the outstanding performance of the utility and its operation.
Move for adoption. Second.
It's been properly moved in second that a resolution congratulating the Pine Bluff Wastewater Utility and Manager Ken Johnson for receiving the Platinum Six Award from the National Association of Clean Water Agencies and expressing the appreciation of the city for its outstanding performance. Floor is now open for discussion.
Mayor, I, there is a slot on here for everyone's name to go on and it will be before, before he receives it and, and that because we all want to commend him from running such a well organized and functional organization over there.
Any other comments?
He's back there. I definitely want to be on it and I congratulate Ken and appreciate all the great things he does, not only at wastewater, but with other things with Griderfield and other things that he's involved in. Thank you, Ken.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Horton, would you like to read the proclamation at this time? Mr. Johnson, would you like to come forward with your family?
I need to vote.
Oh, we need to vote first.
Thank you, ma'am.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
This is one of our outstanding department heads who achieves in every single area. This is not the first time, I think within six months, he also received another congratulation outstanding award for the services that he does. It's outstanding for Pine Bluff to have such a great, great person to be one of the leaders in our city, so we thank you so much. Proclamation, whereas the Platinum Six Award was awarded to Pine Bluff Wastewater Utility and Mr. Ken Johnson, this was a tremendous team effort of wastewater fifty dedicated employees who made this incredible achievement possible. And whereas the Platinum Six Award recognizes one hundred percent compliance with the federal discharge permits over a consecutive six-year period. This award is only given to facilities with a consistent record of, of full compliance during the consecutive six-year period. And whereas the City of Pine Bluff is the only city in the state of Arkansas to receive this accommodation. Because of wastewater collective efforts, this distinction can become a significant factor in, in attracting new business to our great city, isn't that wonderful? Whereas Mr. Ken Johnson was the director of Pine Bluff Wastewater Utility, has admirable history as he is an employee of thirty-two years and fifteen years as general manager. He is also a Class Four wastewater operator. He has earned his bachelor's degree in biology, his master's in public administration, he is married to his lovely wife Rita Johnson, and they have two beautiful daughters. In addition, he is a member of the Indiana Street Baptist Church and his personal passion in his off time is aviation and flying airplanes. Now therefore, I, Debbie Hollinsworth, the mayor of the City of Pine Bluff, along with all of the city councilmen, Bill Brummett, George Stebs, Thelma Walker, Charles Board, Glenn Brown, Senior, Lord Holcomb, Junior, Glenn Brown, Junior, and Stephen Mays, congratulate you. In the City of Pine Bluff, we all really, really appreciate everything that you're doing and going to be doing for our city. We thank you.
Good evening, mayor and members of the council. I'm certainly honored to receive this on behalf of Pine Bluff Wastewater Utility and on behalf of the Utility Commission. I would be remiss if I didn't mention that the fifty employees made this award possible. We work very hard on a day-to-day basis, as you know, the type of work that we do in the trenches in the sewer system, being able to manage a collection system that's a hundred and twenty years old, a wastewater treatment plant that has gone through about three different upgrades, but yes, it's part of the job, but again, I can say that we look, we're always concerned about clean water and making sure that we have full compliance with EPA standards. So again, hats off to all the employees and it's something that the City of Pine Bluff to be very proud of. You mentioned about industrial development, economic development, some things that we can do when the industry comes to town, the first thing they inquire about is that our compliance record, so we have a hundred percent compliance record and hopefully that will be a selling point to us acquiring new industries and facilities here in the City of Pine Bluff. Again, thank you, thank you, mayor and members of the council.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Yes. Mr. Johnson, you spoke well of your employees, but one of your right-hand men, David Dean, anytime I call him, he, he's, he does what he's supposed to do. If, if he can't fix it, he call the other people. So, you know, you did well to talk about your employees and I want to give David a pat on the back because if I call him, he, he gets on what he has to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay.
That concludes our agenda, mayor. I'd like to remind everybody about the meeting Thursday at one o'clock for the budget preview. That concludes our agenda, sir.
Okay, do we have a motion dismissed?
I move we adjourn.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Properly moved in second that the meeting be adjourned, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
We still have, we still have some on in them.
Meeting.
Speakers.
Meeting.
Four of those?
Yeah.